Good. Test. Good evening, everyone. Time is now 6:06 PM and we are here for a work session with the Parks and Recreation Department to review the 2025 beach operations and policies and fees for the 2026 season. So I will pass it off to our Director of Parks and Rec. Please kick us off and thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me. Welcome. Thank you for your service. Before I get started, again, I not only want to thank all of you for your support, but also the town manager, town staff, my beach staff, Bill Eckert, the beach manager, our lifeguard staff, the head lifeguard, Mike Florio, and of course, all of our other staff. You know, you hear people say the terminology of it takes a village, but it literally takes a small army to run Narragansett Town Beach. So I'm grateful to everybody, finance, purchasing, town clerk's office, and everybody involved. So thank you. And of course, my direct staff. So thank you to everyone. So the purpose of this workshop is to provide you, the town council, and the public, an overview of our 2025 beach season. And tonight, we're not going to be discussing any policy recommendations or changes. If we decide there is a need for that, we will bring that, or I will bring that forward to you in the agenda setting at a council meeting in the future. So right now, we're not going to talk about any of that. As you know, Narragansett Town Beach is a self-sustaining entity. That is, all annual expenses, administration costs, capital expenses, improvements, and storm damages are paid for by the fees collected from users of the beach. And we say users, that's our visitors, our residents, and taxpayers, and everybody who else who likes to come and enjoy beautiful Narragansett Town Beach. And again, as a reminder to everybody here and also those at home, no taxpayer dollars go to running Narragansett Town Beach. In this slide, you see Mike Florio, our head lifeguard. Back one, please. Thank you. One of our very popular summer programs is our junior lifeguard program, and that's Mike teaching a couple of the youngsters how to perform CPR. And of course, our team won again the lifeguard games for the 38th year in a row. Next slide, please. So Narragansett Town Beach is town-owned since 1938 after the great hurricane. A nice fact we like to present forward is 40% of our beachgoers are non-residents and visitors. The mission of Narragansett Town Beach is to ensure long-term sustainability, create a superior beach experience, operate the beach, of course, safely and efficiently, recognize that the beach is a town asset, and as such, all policies, fees, parking, cabanas, lockers, changing rooms, et cetera, should first serve the residents and taxpayers of this town. Also, it's very important that we ensure the fee structure not only addresses annual expenses, but also provides sufficient income to address long-term capital requirements arising from building renovations, parking lot repairs and replacements, sand replenishment, storm damage, erosion, and of course, I should have added dune replenishment and dune rebuild as well. One topic we don't talk about too much is we do an annual survey every year. It goes out pretty much between halfway through August until mid-September. And I just wanted to let everybody know that over 80%, well, first of all, 95% of resident taxpayers usually take the survey. We only have a small amount of non-residents that take the survey. And over 80% report that our staff at the beach are very courteous, if not extremely courteous. 76% report the staff is very knowledgeable, to extremely knowledgeable. And over 76% report the overall beach experience is very good or excellent. Of course, that survey is posted online. It's currently available for all of our previous years for you to review at any time. Again, as previously stated, the beach is run on an enterprise fund. On November 6th of 2023, an enterprise fund balance policy was provided, I'm sorry, was approved by the town council. As we know, enterprise funds are used to manage the revenues and expenses of a town service that not all residents use, like water sewer, and in this particular case, Narragansett Town Beach. Are there any questions right now? Thank you. All right. So the parameters of a beach enterprise fund, or of the beach enterprise fund. So per the beach enterprise fund policy and the 2024 annual audit, the maximum unrestricted fund balance is 1 point, I'm sorry, 4.11 million. Now, keep in mind, that does not include the 1.5 million of the storm reserve. Presently, the fund is above our maximum per the fund policy by $257,000. However, this enterprise fund policy allows for excess funds to be rolled into future capital balances for major capital expenditures. And with that said, this is the plan moving forward for renovations to the south pavilion at Narragansett Town Beach.
Just a quick question on that.
Yes, sir.
Just a point of clarity. The major capital expenditures, as you've alluded to here, I assume, but I just want to confirm that the two, the capital expenditures need to be related to the beach. It can't just be 257 that goes somewhere else in the capital budget overall.
That is correct. All of the money within the beach enterprise fund must stay there and cannot be utilized for any other project in town.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome. So continuing, yes, sir.
Quick question, Michelle. What are the renovations being done to the south pavilion? And what's estimated start slash completion?
So we're going to talk about that in probably another 30 seconds, if you could hold on one minute.
I can wait that long.
All right, great. So I just wanted to let you know. So in talking about that 4.11 million, plus of course, the 1.5, which we have in storm reserve. So again, all of that money is co-mingled together. It's the savings account of the beach. So when you look at this next slide, these are our audited beach enterprise fund balances from 2018 to 2024. So again, the 4.11 million plus the five, I'm sorry, the 1.5 million storm reserve equals our fund balance audited of 2.587 million. Onto the next slide. So here's how all that money works out between our revenue, operating revenue, and our operating expenses. So as you see, from 2018 to 2024, it gives you our total audited operating revenue, and then our expenses. So sometimes, a lot of people say, oh, my goodness, the beach makes so much money. And we do. And we have made, you know, a significant amount of money in the past. It all depends on what kind of revenue year and beach year that we're having. But as you can see, in 2018, we had an operating income of 468,000. However, in 2022, we only cleared 99,000. 2023 was 304. And the audit from 2024 is 222,000. So even though the beach does make a lot of money, we also spend a lot of money as well. And with that said, it's important to review the beach fee structure every two or three years to ensure the beach enterprise fund receives the optimal level of financial support that not only covers the daily operation at the beach, but like I said earlier, the capital improvements and improvements to infrastructure that's needed. Some of our buildings, for example, the south pavilion was last redone in 1990. So we need to keep up with those infrastructure improvements for the growing needs that we have down there at the beach.
So if I'm looking at this slide, and I see operating income, is it correct to interpret that that's the total amount that the town beach made in selling of passes and cabanas and lockers and everything, all combined into one?
Correct.
Okay. It would be nice, if possible, as a follow-up, to get these numbers and then just like maybe in an Excel sheet, just like what the beach fees were for each of these years going back to 2018. That way, we can take a look to see how it correlated or if there was a big weather impact or something, which I'm sure there was to a lot of this. But that would be good information for us.
Sure.
Thank you.
So what is, why is there such a big increase from '23 to '24 in operating costs? What would, what would make that happen?
So it could be a lot of things, and I don't have that information right now. So I would have to look back at our expenses for that particular year. It could have, it could have been something that we spent more in the sand that year. Usually, we spend between $8,000 and $10,000. Some year, we've spent up to upwards of $18,000. And that's on a normal year, too, not a storm-related event. It could be we needed to buy a piece of equipment. Maybe we bought one of the new geezers $15,000, $20,000 that year. So it could have been an expense that was much higher, or several expenses that were much higher. Possibly new cameras throughout the beach property, new plumbing right after COVID. Or during COVID, we went through, through a lot of plumbing repairs for touchless sinks, toilets, and things like that. So those are the things that immediately come to my mind.
Okay. Thank you.
The next slide demonstrates basically the day-to-day differences between our beach days. So every day, the beach manager reports to me on what the weather is, what the conditions of the beach were that day, approximately how many people were on the beach that day, with handheld clickers at all of our admission points. Also, when the west lot filled, when the north lot filled, and when the south lot filled. So in 2025, obviously, we had a very, very seasonable season with only three days that were rain days. The west lot filled almost 40 times, the north lot 14 times, and the south lot five times. The handheld clicker count was 173,000 visitors. However, I believe that number's a little low because our daily admission revenue for 2025 is $97,000 more than 2024. Because of our new policy with the south lot being open at 1 o'clock, Monday through Friday, during the week to help accommodate non-resident parking, we were able to park on those days at least 25 to 45 non-resident vehicles, and therefore, we had an increase in our revenue for parking in the 2025 season. And we're going to go over that, all of those increases in a couple of slides ahead.
So can I just ask a question about that?
Sure.
So when I'm reading this, it says north lot filled 14 times, south lot filled five times. Does that include the 1 o'clock opening of the lot?
So if the south lot closed just due to a busy day, for example, the Fourth of July or Memorial Day weekend, we would not have had the opportunity to open that to non-resident parking. We only opened that lot up when the west lot filled and there were sufficient spaces in the south lot that we could sell those.
Above the five days, above the five days?
No. So the south lot would only open, per policy, Monday through Friday at 1 o'clock when the west lot filled, or kind of filled, and there was plenty if the lot was half open. Now, on a busy day, if there was only 10 spots in the south lot, we wouldn't open the south lot to non-residents because it was a busy day, and we needed to leave those spaces open for our resident taxpayers.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Okay.
So those are the conditions that it has to be before you open the lot?
Correct. Correct. And again, it's a judgment call that I allow the beach manager. So say, for example, it's only 11:30, and we've got non-residents circling, because of course, they try to park on the street, and we can't allow them to do that. The police will come and push them along. Bill will call me, or he'll make the decision himself and say, listen, I've got to open this lot. It's not even full. There's too many people on the street. And we open it.
Okay.
What about weekends, Michelle? That's all during the week, right?
Correct. We do not open the south lot to non-resident parking on the weekends.
Is there a statistic on how many days the south lot was filled on weekends?
I'm sure it's included in this number, right?
It's going to be the number that's, oh, on the weekends? No, I'm not sure. On the, I would have to get back to you on that, on the particular weekends when it fills.
But you have that information, right?
I do, sir. I have that on my big spreadsheet.
Yeah, that'd be nice to know.
All right. So here are revenue comparisons. Please keep in mind, the highlighted areas are indications, or indicators, of the increase in revenue that we saw this year. Again, please know that these are unaudited numbers. All right. So keep that in mind. These numbers come from the direct reports on the revenue per each day that I calculate in a spreadsheet. Because again, we, as the summer goes along, we like to see throughout the summer if we are getting ahead or if we're falling behind. So the adult seasonal beach pass, which I thought was very interesting this year, I guess it lends to the idea that people are moving into town. We had an increase in revenue to $87,000, which is an uptick from last year of $28,000. Youth passes pretty much stayed the same, vehicle replacements a little lower. Seasonal parking passes for our resident taxpayers pretty much stayed the same. We had a big uptick, uptick in the daily parking sales by 13,000. And again, that correlates with opening the south lot during the week at 1 o'clock for non-resident parking. The big one, as I mentioned earlier, our daily admission sales. So these are people visiting our beach that have to purchase a daily wristband. Remember, that's anybody aged 12 and over. Our revenue this year is up by $97,000.
Can you just remind us real quick, 2024 season, was there a non-resident pass in any shape or form available?
No.
Okay.
We haven't had non-resident beach passes in several years, probably 20.
Well, it wasn't that long ago when you and I were both working there and we had them.
True. It seems like ages ago, though, testing it.
So just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
You're welcome. And then finally, our cabanas, changing room, and lockers, $10,000 increase. And again, as you remember, in, well, yes, in 2024, we voted to, the council voted to a 20% increase. So cabanas went from 2,500 to 3,000. Lockers went from 700 to 840. Again, I'm sorry, that's changing rooms. And then lockers went from 450 to 520.
And we sold out the lockers this year.
We did, sir. Yes. So moving on to capital projects. Some of our completed projects, of course, was the 2024 Narragansett Town Beach carrying capacity study, the deck roof at the North Beach Clubhouse, which I know a lot of you have seen and enjoyed, and the purchase of new ADA accessible beach mats at both the north pavilion and south pavilion. Pending projects and unexpected repairs, as you know, you recently approved the additional repairs of $128,000 to the retaining wall at the south lot. That project will be done shortly. We're just waiting on CRMC permitting. So again, an unexpected expense. We knew about the original repairs that we're getting FEMA money from, but this was an unexpected repair. And again, this will come out of the storm reserve account, which is why we have that account in the beach enterprise fund. Renovations to the south pavilion. Don't know how much those are going to cost. A design plan for the south pavilion, once we have an idea on what kind of design we want, will probably be approximately $25,000. And then, of course, dune restoration. We need a design plan and how we're going to do that. That plan will probably be about $25,000. So getting back to the major capital improvement.
Michelle, quick question.
Yes, sir.
For the 128,000 for repairs, you said that's coming out of the 1.5 million?
Correct.
Okay. We have an additional 257. Will that go back into the 1.5 to bring that up to par, or is it being?
It is. Because again, that money, that 1.5 is all co-mingled in the 5.8. So whenever we put money back in, that raises it up. And of course, whenever we take money out, because the And of course, whenever we take money out, because the storm reserve is directly encapsulated in all that 5.8. So we'll have the expenses, and when we do have revenue, it helps to offset the balance. But again, for capital projects, as I'll allude to now, again, it's something where we just don't know how much this renovation is going to cost. We have the 5.8, but I don't, I don't know. So with that said, this project could, could be upwards of 3 to 4 million dollars. It could be, I just don't know. The renovations were last done in 1990. The functionality of the building, if you've been there recently, needs to be changed. We need a dedicated sales office. The procedure at the sales office right now, with people standing out in the cold, not being able to come into a dedicated office is really kind of an outdated situation. We need a dedicated police substation, hopefully right in the same area where the sales office and the money will be. We need storage garages for our beach gators and also our other equipment, our boats, our dory, et cetera. Each year, we spend thousands of dollars renting containers to house these items. It would be nice if we could have our own storage capabilities for those items. Renovations of the restrooms, getting that building a more green building, similar to the North Pavilion. It's old and outdated. So we need to engage an expert on a design plan, which again, will cost money. We'll need to get an architect in, and also having public workshops. Those items I just discussed now are only my ideas and staff ideas, but I'd like to see what the general public, resident taxpayers, and all of you have to think about what your thoughts and ideas are. That is all I have to say right now, but I would like to turn, ask you if any questions, and I would like to offer the floor to Dennis Lynch, the Chair of the Recreation Advisory Board.
If you know this offhand, when was the North Pavilion last updated and renovated?
2011, sir.
2011, okay.
So thank you, Michelle, and there's an interesting story to the last renovation of the North Pavilion in 2011 because it was a multimillion-dollar renovation. And then 2012 came along and Hurricane Sandy came through. The, the reserve fund was wiped out at the beach and the beach had to borrow from the town in order to get the beach up and running again. Ultimately, FEMA did provide a lot of reimbursement, but those are the types of tricky situations with the uncertainty of the, of the beach itself. So obviously, Michelle did a completely perfect job on what's going on at the beach. We are the advisory board, so we listen and we try to provide input when we can. We have three, we actually have two active advisory board members here, and one who, an alumni who is good enough to come for this full house this evening. So we, we appreciate that. So the, the beach is, the beach is an incredibly important asset. We take our role seriously. Michelle is superb at running a highly complicated business for 12 weeks a year. And I, I think this, a big part of today was just prepping you for a major project that is the first one in about 15 years the beach is going to undertake. And there are still, there are still important things to be done. You'll remember, there was a beach carrying study that was done last year that had a lot of recommendations for beach sustainability. And the dunes design is the first of that, to try to keep our beach probably the gem of the Northeast. So we're, we're happy that we can lend support when we can. And I didn't really need to be here to say that, but.
So I want to say a couple of things, just throw it out there. First of all, thank you so much, a great, great presentation and a lot of information that is valuable to us. In the future, like, things that are on my mind are thinking about Monday through Friday at 1 o'clock. Maybe it would behoove us to think about an earlier opening if, 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 if the parking lots are empty, just to make some more revenue, frankly. The second thing I was thinking about is, I love the south pavilion getting some work done. I think that's super important, and I think that's something we should concentrate on. But I also was thinking about maybe making it family-friendly with a playground in there would be something. It doesn't have to be a crazy playground, but some kind of playground structure would be something interesting to throw into the works in the future. Nothing that I'm like, let's do this right this second, but like, thoughts, ideas? Just to make the, you know, South Kingston has a playground, it's very nice. So otherwise, what a great presentation. I'm super happy to be on the committee and continue moving forward with everything, so.
Thank you.
So I just have a question. So the next step is you're going to present us with the, the fees or, or, I'm sorry, I don't remember how you put it.
Fees and policies, yeah.
And so that, that will be presented to the town council. And at that point, would it specify who is eligible to get passes and who's not? Whether non-residents can get them, or someone who like rents their property in Narragansett? Would that all be included in that part of the presentation?
It will currently, after exiting the last Rec Advisory Board last week, the atmosphere right now is not to recommend any policy changes at this point. But again, we're going to discuss that further at upcoming RAB meetings. And we will present, or I will present to you an agenda outlining all of those recommendations.
Okay, good, because I, I mean, I just like hear of people who own property and their renters can't have passes. And, you know, I was just wondering like if a hotel is able to get passes? Just looking for that kind of information, so I, perfect, that would be great, thank you.
I would be happy to meet with you and the town manager if you'd like to have a one-on-one, or we can go through all that if you'd like.
Perfect, thank you, Michelle, I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
I have some questions. Yeah, and every time, I don't go to the beach that much in the summer, but every time I go, it's really nice to go there, and it's special. Even in the evening, it's really nice. I know, you know, at the beginning of the season, there was a couple incidents there, but those are very, you know.
They're few and far between, those were really isolated due to those high 100-degree days.
Yeah, yeah, and, you know, I just think it's, it's very special. But I did notice a couple of things that I would just suggest. Is there ever a last call for the bathrooms to close? Like, people have said that to me a few times, you know, like have a last call like half an hour, just so they remember, you know?
We, we do, we make a number of announcements, we do, yes, sir. And also, we announce when they're being closed down for 10 or 15 minutes for cleaning.
And when the showers are going to turn off too.
Correct, yeah.
And when lifeguards are off too.
Oh, yeah, so it all happens.
I used to do the announcements.
There are tons of those announcements always, but I would say that sometimes they're inaudible.
Yeah, the speaker definitely could use some loving care.
Maybe you don't hear it, that's the problem.
Well, we did, just last year, we spent almost $30,000 on a new wireless system, so.
Was it put in this year?
It, it was, it's a great system. In fact, we get more complaints about too many announcements now.
Well, yes, well, maybe we need some kind of other, other way of telling people. And then, you know, the south beach, I kind of went down to look at that expenditure, you know, from the storm that got taken out of the.
The retaining wall?
Yeah, the retaining wall got taken out of the, you know, the federal money that we got for that FEMA, I think, Mr. Lynch said. And then we found the other wall to be separated, I saw that. It was pretty much the same length, I think, you know? But I did notice, like, I was just thinking, like, if you, you know, I know like after the storms, like we're always cleaning out the parking lot, but maybe we need to think about that wall being just a little bit higher, you know? Because it seems like it's, like it's kind of low, you know? It's like, what do you do with the sand when it ends up in the parking lot? You put it back on the beach?
Certain amounts of it we can.
You're allowed to do that.
Sometime, we are by CRMC standards. Unfortunately, and I could get back to you on this, I don't believe the wall is allowed to be any higher than it is per CRMC guidelines, but I could certainly get an answer for you on that. I wish we could build it bigger, but I think there's a specific reason why we can't.
Yeah, because I remember like when the fence used to always be there. And then, you know, I remember somebody coming up with a great idea of taking it down, you know, for the offseason, but, you know, maybe the fence could be, because like, I guess there's no dunes there because people want to go park there and look at the water. Is that the reason we don't have dunes there, or because there's no dunes in front of us?
No, it's, it's just because, just the high water table, sir, in that area. Unless it's super, super low, you know, the tide is out, obviously. But because of the storm surge and the storm impact, I don't think a dune would survive very well there, unless, of course, we dumped a tremendous amount of sand down in that area, which is part of one of the recommendations with the engineering report.
Well, I think it would be disappointing for a lot of people not to be able to see the water and sit in their car because it seems like an overlook, you know?
It is, yeah.
Special, but I think the wall could come up, you know, if you were doing it again. And then the fence could be just a little bit, you know, maybe it's a.
Shorter.
Four-foot fence instead of a six-foot fence or something else, just an idea. And then, oh, and then, so after hours, you have like potter potties at the beach?
We do.
Summertime?
Summertime and throughout the winter.
Okay, and you're going to put them back for the winter?
Yes, so they, they will remain there. At the end of this month, we'll go down to just a one-in-one at the end of the south pavilion, which is the northbound side, it's tucked right behind the dumpster corral. We have them there, you know, kind of makes it a little more private, and then the wind's not causing the doors to flap open and close. But yes, throughout the entire beach season, we have three-in-one at the south pavilion, as well as the same amount at the north pavilion.
So then at the north pavilion, you have them in the winter too?
So if you go by the north pavilion today, you'll see we have two towards the west side of the building, or three, I can't remember now, and then the ADA one is closer to the handicap ramp.
Yep, I, yeah, that's, you know, great job, you know.
Thank you, well, like I said, it's a small army.
Councilor Durkin just made me think of a couple of quick things, real quick. Sorry. One, lifeguard camp my children go to every year, and I want to congratulate you on that because they love it so much. It's a great, great camp, and I can't appreciate you more for that. There has been talk about extending the hours for the beach, just, just have the exits be a little more organized, so that's something I was thinking about too. And three, if our dredging project continues the way I hope it will continue, we will be able to build dunes without the funds in the future, and I hope that that happens as well. So I just wanted to throw those positive thoughts out there for that.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation and all the hard work that you do over the summer.
Thank you.
I enjoyed the beach after work quite a few days this year. But for the next workshop or whatever we do, would you be able to provide the expenditure report for '24 and '25, similar to the revenue report that you have here, just so we can take a look at why expenditure's increased by about 400K? And then for beach restoration, for this past year, do you remember how many tons of sand we dropped? And how much that cost?
So last April, we dumped approximately 2,200 square footage of sand on the beach after the winter storms of January. This year, just normal storm replenishment, filling in our low spots throughout the beach, you know, where our cement walkways end, you know, a lot of times we have a dip in the sand. So just covering those locations, spreading the sand throughout the beach, it was just 200 square feet of cubic sand. But I do have a full report on the sand if you need it.
Like $30,000?
$30,000, okay.
Because of the average annual sand, right? Between 25 and 30,000?
Well, it all depends, this year was only a little over eight because we only did the 200 cubic yards, right? But again, after the storms in January, so last April, I believe it was about, about 16,000. But again, I have a full report on our sand replenishment if you'd like to have that sent to you.
I would love that, please, because I was, I was walking my dog down at the, the wall the other day and happened to notice that Surfers End has become unearthed once more. The, the rocks and the metal, it's all sticking out. So I'm, I'm just kind of wondering and thinking, if we put more sand on top of that, even more than the 2,200, or whatever amount goes there, might we be able to build that up such that that doesn't get exposed in the offseason? And maybe we could put a little less on, just a thought.
Oh, so again, really terrific presentation. And I feel like this is very conversational since you and I had the honor of working for many summers at the town beach together. And maybe that also puts me in a very unique position to kind of speak on firsthand experiences. I was able to see a lot of things that worked well and some things that could be improved upon. In general, I express my desire for more affordability. I know that, you know, looking back, the reason why I want to see the various breakdown of costs year over year is just to see if there's any correlation as I've laid out. But also knowing that, you know, there's a lot of hardships that people are going through, especially by today's standards. And I want to make sure that we're doing everything that we can to support our residents and offering the best package possible. If that means possibly lowering fees for our year-round residents, and maybe, again, I don't want to cause any chaos here, but, and maybe in some shape or form, opening up a non-resident option and raising that up higher. You know, is there a way in which we can offset it to benefit the residents while also maintaining and maybe even making more income? I also know that when you and I worked at the beach, it really doesn't seem like that too long ago, but maybe, you know, it's now coming up to maybe eight or nine years. But we did have, to Jason's point, during the weekday, we opened for pay in south lot right when the day started. Once it got two-thirds full, we flipped it over to west lot only. And I would be interested to see, you know, again, with the numbers that I've requested, if it's, if we can see that there was a measurable amount more of income that was made during those summers in which we allowed that opportunity. Because again, I do, you know, it kills me to drive by the beach, and I love, love how accessible we're making the beach to our year-round residents and all residents. But for that matter, it, it bothers me when I go by the beach and I do see it empty, knowing that there was a time that we were charging until it got two-thirds full and then switched over to west lot. So I just feel like there's a possible income that we could be making there during that time. I also am greatly in favor of any building up and restoring of our dunes, planting seagrass. I think that, and again, I'm not, I'm not a big, I'm big on numbers, but I couldn't tell you what the costs of putting in dunes are in front of me. But I think there's many ways in which if we were to plant seagrass and build a dunes, that maybe there are a lot of capital expenditures or maintenance costs that could be circumvented by better protecting our resources and beach around us so that we're not losing the battle, because we're, in many ways, we're losing the battle to the ocean. And, you know, that's, again, that's just one, another thought that I had. And again, just my hats off to the incredible staff there at the town beach, Bill Eckert, Dylan Sheridan. You know, you all run a very tight ship, very respectable. I know for a fact that that response rate should be 100% when I, when I hear that how respectful and the staff is there at the town beach, because every time I go in there, it's a good morning, hi, how are you, welcome to the Narragansett Town Beach and thank you for coming. I actually think they may even be a little bit more friendly than when I was working there because I was really hard on checking passes at that time, so. Again, these are just thoughts, initial thoughts from where I'm coming from. So I don't know if you guys want to respond to that, or if. So I don't know if you guys want to respond to that or if you just take that as follow-up for our next discussion. I guess my question is, when can we expect that next discussion to happen?
So I think I would like to get you the reports. I'll get them to Jim. He could forward those to you, so you have that financial data and also a response to all of your questions. And then, again, please excuse me if I've forgotten something. Once you get that from Jim, I'll be certainly happy to answer any of the questions I might have missed. So I think probably that would be a good idea to start with that. When I do present the agenda to you regarding any types of change, I would like you to have all of this information well before that.
Thank you.
And then you'll have, you know, a lot of working knowledge, financial knowledge before you.
Excellent. And is there a hard deadline that we need to have these approved by? I know one of the first things that we had, that was presented to us when we first came aboard, was the question of cabanas and grandfathering in a new policy. So I just want to make sure that we're, you know, reviewing and giving enough time for us to adequately look at all of the policies and make our recommendations so that we're not like, okay, this has to be approved today, otherwise we're not going to have the passes in time to start selling for the season.
Yeah, so I think once you get the financial information over the next couple of weeks, you can review it at your leisure, but I don't anticipate putting forth an agenda for any change or for just the policy structure altogether until probably February.
Okay.
Gives you plenty of time to review.
Excellent. Well, does anyone else have any other questions or comments? Well, congratulations to the lifeguards again for a tremendous season. I have no doubt that they will repeat for a thirty-ninth season. So with that, thank you so much for coming.